Yeah, I'm rolling.
Oh hey, we start early, we'll do it.
No, I've got seven.
Okay, the school board will come to session. Since we've had already had a bunch of lesions and a moment of silence, we'll just go straight to the public comments concerning end of items. Is there anybody either here or on the Zoom would like to do? Please tell us who you are. All right, here are none. Approval of minutes. Need to have a motion for approval of the December 14th additional appropriation meetings that we had, the regular board meeting, and then January 4th, the reorganization meeting. You want to see? We can do that now if you want, that'd be fine. If somebody wants to make a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the end of the year agenda for the minute.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Do you need another changes?
What's that?
Do you need another changes or?
Uh, I think everybody has a copy of them on it, so we're probably okay with that. We have a motion, a second, any discussion on it? Got it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Uh, so now let's go to the approval of the minutes. That part I did not change any, so we need a motion for the approval of those notes.
Mr. President, I move the approval of minutes from the December 14th, 2020 additional appropriation meeting, the December 14th, 2020 regular meeting, and the January 4th, 2021 reorganization meeting.
Any discussion, comments on it? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Okay, administration reports. Mrs. Gill, you're on top of the sheet that I have. Are you there?
Here, sorry.
You're fine.
I go last, I like to follow the crowd.
Well, you're on, you're first.
Okay, that's great. I said in my board report, the only thing that I forgot to mention that I wanted to bring up is that we have a full house. I know we are at 24 in all of our sections except for one, but there's a reason why that's not at 24. But we have superseded the size that we wanted that classroom to be. So it's exciting times at Camden, we're filling up fast, and I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Gill? Mrs. Gill, would you enlighten us what the PTQ level was? The excitement behind that for where we're at?
At exact, yes, no problem. What happened, the state came in, and that's an hour-long intense observation where they follow the teacher around and observe what she's doing with the students. Huge shout out to Mrs. Stevens because everyone knows that an observation is stressful, but then to have a long one by the state, an hour long, is just... She did absolutely amazing. They made a point to tell me that she was doing a fantastic job, and they love to work there and see what our student. This also required a binder of artifacts that we had to collect and put together to prove that we are a preschool that meets their standards and expectations. I mean, I think I made a list of those expectations for you in the board report, but I would be happy to show you the binder at any time. A lot of that includes communication with our families and parent surveys. So this was a huge undertaking, and I appreciate all of the support, the shout outs and encouragement from the administrative team to get this done for our corporation.
Thank you. Mr. Scheidler, you're next.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, sorry about that. Hopefully you have a copy of my report, just wanted to highlight a couple of things. You should see young Quinn, the very first friendly face you see there. I just love walking in this second grade room recently and being how proud of her leadership notebook. She was very proud, as are many of the students. Again, I, you know, I, when we talked about possibly being there, I really wanted to physically bring in a leadership notebook for you to see it along with some artwork. But you can see some of the different pages that our youth are maintaining. That's just a few of them. There's probably a good, probably 10 to 12 other pages that reflect on different things that they're doing. But all the students in the school are establishing a reading goal and a math goal, and then they're discovering strategies they should use to help meet those goals. So you can see a couple of those pictures. Also, I wanted to give a shout out, our art wing is very, very colorful. Mrs. Hansel, in her second year, continues to do a great job. The kids have been recently studying Dr. Seuss. Theodore G., I know he's something, but I didn't type his name. But Dr. Seuss typically illustrated his own books, and so they studied that. They captured his thinking behind his process and madness, if you will, and then they created their own. They're very beautiful down in the hallway. And the last one was probably one of the most difficult. We've always had a very rich Christmas program, and as you think back to, well, you just think back into the month of December, it was quite chaotic. And bless Mrs. Dennison, you know, she started, I want to say around, you know, September, something like that. She want, she was adamant that we do something, and we bounced around so many different things. But the end result, we're very proud. The kids worked through some Christmas songs, some holiday theme songs, and, you know, we used social distancing, we kept the timeframe short, and we've got about a 20 to 22-minute video collection that we were able to share outward with our families. So I just want to give a shout out to those individuals and all the teachers and staff that are working hard to keep sane through all this, and the parents. We would thank the parents for their efforts, and of course, we thank the board for all your support as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Clayton, you have 30 seconds now. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you.
Well, I think I already kind of spoke in terms of the title and the grants and that. It should be at the end of my report. I guess the one, couple of things I'd just like to highlight under special education is the fact that we did receive a 100% compliance on our indicator 13, where a year ago, a year and a half ago, when they did a proactive poll, we were at 0% compliance. So I just want to really do a big shout out to the secondary level teachers and administrators for following through on the expectations that were given by the state. And so hopefully we can tip in you to write those IEPs and provide the services that need to be provided for those students. And then the other thing, just to bring note that I'm already having conversations with teachers and looking at data in our enrollment numbers for special ed, and we are going to have to staff a resource room out at Camden. We no longer can take those students that leave preschool and just put them into a gen ed classroom and hope for the best. We've got some severe students that are going to need a lot of support in a resource room setting, and currently we do not have that. So I have already spoken with Mrs. Gill and Mr. Scheidler about this concern, so I wanted to bring it to your attention now versus later. And in my report, it talks about two significant students, and then we just had a family move in with four IEPs, and she's requested an evaluation for her fifth of seven students, or fifth of seven children that she has adopted that she says is going to need an IEP in order to be successful in kindergarten next year. And then as I was walking out today, we got a phone call from a family that's moving here from Ohio, and that daughter will be in kindergarten as well next year and has an IEP. So lots of things happening, and I just want us to be prepared for a successful fall.
And Allison, didn't you say our first steps might explode too? It was a great.
Yeah, do, yeah. So that you understand the process, so our developmental preschool students, those referrals came to us through first steps. Due to COVID, first step caseworkers have not been able to go into the home, so therefore, a lot of those evaluations have been put on hold. Those caseworkers are now getting their vaccination, and therefore, they're going to start going into the homes, and I have a feeling we're going to start hearing a lot from them. I did just receive two from Bauer Head Start today. And I thought we struggled with having a Spanish interpreter. I now have a family that speaks no English, and they're French. So if anybody knows French, I'm going to need some help.
Mrs. Tyner. Thank you. Real quick, I've got a question on the resource part.
Yes.
Of us thinking down the line. Will that be like a certified teacher-type scenario that we'll need to do? And will the funds do special ed? Will there be enough funds to cover that? Will we need to look at partial cover out of a different funding?
So yes, we will need a licensed special education teacher to run that program. We may even be looking at having to hire an additional paraprofessional for the classroom support. Not certain yet until we really kind of know where the cards fall, but definitely a licensed teacher. You know, that's a good question that you do bring up as far as can the grants cover it? Possibly. That's one thing I know that I want to talk with Mr. Rock and Andrea about is really finalizing those numbers, because I have found that the numbers that were given to me when I first came on board as far as salary and benefits don't necessarily jive with what it's actually costing. So I know I've put some money into benefits because that's what I was told to put in, and it's not costing us necessarily that amount. So I really want to kind of, not kind of, I really do want to know accurate numbers, because that's where we leave a lot of gray area in these grants, and it just causes more pre-rights, and maybe we have more money than we think because we don't have money allocated properly.
Okay, thank you. That leaves, Mrs. Circle. Are you crones up?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'd like to sit, can you hear me okay? I would like to say first and foremost, thank you, Mr. Rock, for that financial presentation. That was very insightful and detailed, so thank you. And I'd like to say welcome to Mr. Owens sitting at the board now. Welcome to the Delphi Committee School Corporation Board. You hopefully have my board report in front of you. We had a lot of amazing things happen over the last couple of weeks, even the way in Christmas break. As you know, some of them are JSC does their Player of the Year, and Evan Fritz was selected as the Offensive Player of the Year for football. Haley Nelson was selected for all area volleyball team for the JSC Small Schools. I knew you already talked to Hannah Shrenian, but a big one was this weekend, our swim team won the Delphi invite, both the men's and the women's. So that was a huge success, and I do believe that Coach had to shave his head this weekend. I have yet to see that happen. We have our January Student of the Month. And then some general information that I wanted to share with you. The athletics department, now that we are red, is barely breaking even this point. The concession stand, we're paying people to be there just for, to sell sodas. So we're not making money there, and obviously, right now, we can only let in two adults per athlete. I do know that Mr. Sims is planning on having another one of those fundraisers that is going to go on with the fundraising university. Can you hear me? I think I just kind of saw. He's planning on having another one of those fundraisers, but he's going to do it at the middle school the second week of February. It's an hour where they call and they get sponsorship. The high school had a vast success with that, so we're going to do it at the middle school at this time. I also want to thank all the parents of the athletes and their flexibility, because it has not been easy, only having two people attend. Hopefully, we will get out of the red, and that will not have to continue for the rest of the season. We are hosting the boys' basketball sectionals. It'll be the first week and launch, by the way. The high school has entered testing season. We have WIDA testing window opened today, and that's actually K through 12 testing. We are doing our PSAT on January 26th. That is a rescheduled test date because we were virtual during the first testing window. And then all of our juniors have to take ISUP this year because they did not finish it. They only took half of it last year. So all of our lovely juniors and any senior who did not pass is getting ready to take ISUP. So we've got a really action-packed month. So limited snow would be great, and limited vertical would be wonderful. So we could all, but who knows? Some of the exciting stuff, though, as Mr. Scheidler was talking about the fine arts and how they've been so flexible, that's also happened with the high school. And I kind of wanted Jessica Callan, who's involved in both the play and choir, to kind of talk about the neat things they've been doing to go virtual. Jessica and Mary.
Yes. So for the play, Friday night, we got to perform our Walt Player Winter Play, I guess, and we performed it, "The Wonderful Life." And we did it as a radio play because we couldn't do it live because the elevator's so small, so, due to COVID. So we recorded that, and I believe it's sent out to YouTube, and we had a total of nine students participating in that, reading all of the parts from "The Wonderful Life." So that was really cool. And then for choir, we're also going to record that, all of our songs tomorrow, and send that on YouTube as well. All of our songs from the fall to Christmas.
Thank you.
Jessica, how was your part in the play?
Oh, I, I played Violet Dick, and I played Suzu, and I also played the narrator.
That's quite a contrast.
Yeah, I heard it was amazing. I heard people were just like, yeah.
Any questions?
So I'll make sure to send that to the board when we get that YouTube link. I'm also planning on time our high school can watch it during their fourth time as well. I think Mary and Sarah will see it. Any questions for the high school at this time?
Thank you. Look forward to seeing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Raddick, are you on?
Not available.
Not available.
He's not feeling well.
He's not feeling well, okay. Well, that's one of the lost clock.
We aren't listing the boys' basketball sectionals here. Well, this is a comment on dates. I do know the eighth graders are going to start scheduling in February, so we are planning on having our guidance team come down to the eighth grade and actually go into classes and talk to them about their options. So we are, I know that's one of our goals. This little.
Thank you.
I hesitate to say this out loud, but, but we have had a very positive start to school, and we're excited about that. The, I just, I want to continually thank people who are really making fantastic efforts to keep, keep our children in school, keep them safe, and everyone's done a fantastic job. Mrs. Ross is back after being out for some medical attention, and she provided a report that I thought was interesting. In the second quarter of the year, we had 29 students who tested positive, eight teachers, 18 staff, so for a total of 55 people, which is interesting because we have roughly 1,700 present, and so that's a rate of 3.25%, which is, which is terrific when you consider that the county was at, at what, oh, at the 15% rates at times. So that's, that's just, that is just great work for people as far as staying safe and staying isolated. Some nice things were said about financials, but I want to emphasize that everybody worked together. Mr. Smith asked me a while ago a little bit about that, and one of the things that we did when we came in is we just asked people to scale back and not order things if they didn't need them, and I think people have done a great, great job of cooperating and helping us with that. We're in a period where I, I think we're going to have unparalleled change that's going to take place. And so the COVID Relief Act that came out is soon, I think, to be replaced by a different COVID Relief Act, and I think it's going to be very different and probably very extensive. So it's, it's going to be a very interesting period of time in anticipation of what's going on. And also, Dr. Friedland asked me to mention tonight that prominently on our webpage is the superintendent's search, and so the notice is there, the flyer, and the app are all accessible right directly from the homepage of our, of our website. And again, Carly has done a great job with these kind of things, and I really appreciate her help.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Rock?
I was going to bring it up in other business, but the ad has been put on our webpage, but I noticed it's not very mobile-friendly. Is there something we can do to achieve what you have that's in work on a phone? A lot of people look up to their phone to find things, and when I looked at the webpage as soon as I knew that it was up, you can only see about half of the words, and there's no way on your phone to get to be able to read the whole thing. I realize a lot of people have a home office, especially someone that might be going into the superintendent field, but they might search there first from their phone. So that was a concern I had as far as promoting the position.
I will tell you that that is certainly beyond my expertise, but we will point it out to the people who, who, who should be able to address it. So thank you. I, I typically don't use my phone since I'm in my office, and that's a, it's a very good point.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Rock? I've got one more kind of report to do here, and since Zach has kind of asked a question. Mr. Owens, would you like to introduce yourself to everybody? You being a new school board member that just came on here in January here.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm married with three kids. I have a five-year-old and twin two-year-old boys. So my five-year-old just recently got into the school corporation. I'm a 2003 graduate of Delphi, and been back in the area for about five years. I grew up in Delphi all 18 years, and I am a small business owner. I have a machine shop over in the Brookston Battleground area.
Thank you. Okay, routine matters. Mr. Owens.
Consent items, you, you have information about the claims and payroll. The amount is $2,534,581.32, and approval of monthly financial reports as submitted by the treasurer. Did you have any comment, Andrea, about anything within that information? Employment of classified staff. Leah Williams has a elementary special ed interventionist. Now, she, we are proposing paying her $15 an hour, but she's only going to work four hours per day or 20 hours per week. So at $60 a day, we, we are extremely fortunate to find somebody who is a licensed special ed teacher who works, works with our students. And as you heard Mrs. Gill talk about tonight, it may well be that we will be looking for special ed teachers as, as we move forward. So also Hannah Ireland is a, is going to be an elementary interventionist, and, and she will work 29 hours per week. She just completed all of her coursework and is waiting to receive her teaching license. So it's good to, to get people that are skilled and have those things. Secondly, Billy Martin for bus driver. And, and something that was brought to my attention and, and by Sandy is that the state is, is requesting that we look at, at, or pay for cafeteria workers. And she also reported that she, that we are starting to move workers to areas like Lafayette, to the schools because of the differential in pay. And so this, this would be a dollar an hour raise for 23 different cafeteria workers, and, and I, I think it's something we need to do to be able to maintain our program. Our funding has been extremely strong in this area, and that's where the money will come from, from the cafeteria. Are there any questions as we go through or?
We just get through and then.
Okay. Employment of certified staff. Before, earlier, you approved a English learner teacher of record, and, and we are requesting that Sabrina King be offered that position, the agreed-to stipend that we identified as $5,000. The difference is that I, I think, based on my conversations with Mrs. Clayton, it's going to take a lot of additional days this first year, and so I would request 15 days beyond the contract for the, for this, the beginning of the '21 school year and include the '22 school year to get the, the ELL program aligned with state standards. It's going to be a lot of work, and I think it's something we need to do. Fundraiser, junior class. Once, you have data about that, about the Believe Kids Touchless Fundraiser. FFA Field Trip to Tri-County, FFA Field Trip to Section 2 FFA, and then the four and five, or the two requests for our, our students to travel, and I don't believe there's a lot of enthusiasm, or I shouldn't say enthusiasm, there's a lot of enthusiasm, but there's probably a lot of pessimism that those trips will, will still be able to take place. We are asking you to approve those, for those dates. On the, on the financial? I'm, I'm sorry, E, yeah. We learned, I learned today, just today, that the seventh grade girls do not have a coach because of quarantine and what's going on. And so I, I'm asking that Rick Rock be, be appointed as a volunteer coach for the seventh grade girls and only be a matter of few. of few days, but that'll give those girls an opportunity to participate.
You have a motion for the consent items, routine matters for A through D?
No moves. Second?
Okay, any questions on routine matters for A through B? E, oh, sorry, E.
I have a question on that. You spent $16 for an electric bus charger, it did not, does that not present a charger?
You say $16?
$1,627.21 for an electric bus charger, I didn't know. Did that not come with one?
No.
Didn't?
You have $16.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
The $1,600 was just for the exterior holder.
We've already approved for the actual charger earlier.
Yeah.
This says electric bus charger.
That was approved with the $1,600, because they had to have that outside the drop door holder.
I have one more question.
Yes.
There's a $800 for a tractor repair, was that for the new tractor you just got last year?
Yeah. It off the hydraulic hoarding down underneath, Ross, you said you come right there alongside?
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
The financial resolution. I know there's about five of them here for six that we need to do. Basically, I don't expect you to read through every one of them, but maybe you'd like the first one, and then we can title the rest of them if we make it.
The, the, A, the first one, the resolution to transfer funds from education to operation is a basic. We simply have a great deal more funding in our education accounts than we do in our operation accounts. If you recall, we transferred a half million dollars at the end of 2020 in order to balance those funds, and, and we have them, and that's a very positive thing. The, the resolution reads, whereas the board is a governing body, and House Bill 1009 required the governing body to establish an education fund for the payment of expenses, whereas that same bill required the governing body and the school corporation to establish an operations fund in the same way, and also then House Bill 10, or 1009 required distributions of tuition support be received to the education fund. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of School Trustees hereby authorizes the treasurer to transfer up to $1,560,000 from the education fund to, to the operations fund to reimburse the operations fund for expenses that are not allocated to student instruction.
So, Mr. Ross, the other one, from the next one going through A, you'll just read them, and if there's any amounts that we need to put into that thing when we make that motion, so to speak, let's, the resolution to transfer funds from rainy day fund to operation fund, is there a limit on that for just?
Well, the operations, or the rainy day fund at this time only has $299,000 in it. B and C are emergency measures, they would only ever happen in case we had a severe emergency.
So we have rainy day fund to operation, rainy day fund to education, as Mr. Ross said, that's for emergency uses only, as we've had it in the past, but hopefully we will be rebuilding that up for the future. D is a resolution to transfer funds from operation funds and education funds to rainy day, which would give us the ability to build the rainy day fund back up as we see if then we have some excess funds to be able to rebuild that.
Correct.
Okay, resolution to correct the education fund balance, would you like to fill that in, or you? Basically, it's, it's guise is that we had an inaccurate balance for, who knows? And, and Andrea's been working with the BOE and state board accounts, and we're now allowed to draw the line in the sand and balance it that way, and so they've given us the permission to do it, that's what that's about.
Correct.
So Andrea, all pan, do you know what that balance analogy is? Okay. Then a resolution to authorize the treasurer to pay claims. We passed this July, January the 4th, but board member, we need to sign that, okay? So that's already been done. And then a resolution to extend the COVID pay. Mr. Ross, would you brief the summary on that, please?
The, we were trying to, we were trying to come up with a way to, to try to be fair to all our employees, some who never had to use COVID leave and thus have been here the entire time, but, but still it stands, there's a possibility that, that these people could be exposed to COVID and, and this day, so this is a, this is an attempt on my part to come up with some kind of a compromise. Some schools are extending it till the end of the school year, some are extending it till the end of March, but I thought if we did this till the end of February, that, that this would, this would be a way to try to treat all our employees that way. My only comment is, I, I frankly anticipate that the federal government is going to change that, and that all this will change probably by our next quarter, but I, I have been wrong about government before. So that's, that is what I, that's what I am proposing.
So I'd like to entertain a motion for financial resolutions by A through G.
Mr. President, I know we adopted the financial resolution to A through G. Second?
A motion on the floor, any questions, discussion, comments?
Good. I just had a question again on the COVID pay, the extension. This is an extension for people that haven't used it.
This is, this is people that have not used the hours that, that are, were available to them originally.
What did it use?
Yeah. And some are, some have already expired, they've already used it.
Give anybody any addition, like just it extends to the people that haven't used it.
Correct. Now, I will say that the classified employees, their days, leave days start over in January, so they now will have, if they used up all their COVID days, they will have some of their, some of their own days available to them to be able to, to not miss paid extension.
Just to clarify, what we're doing with this resolution, item A and E are the only two that we're actually requesting to make a resolution move on, correct? The others are just in the event that we?
No, D would, would, right now, I anticipate, for example, the local income tax funds that we receive come into the education fund. I'm not, Andrea and I are not privy to who made that decision or when it was decided, but I would like to see that money go directly then, once it's put into education, to be moved monthly into rainy day. So that would amount to about $200,000.
And there's a not to exceed on that as well?
Not on that one. You will, you will decide, though. I mean, that, that, any, any time those transfers are made, are made, you will, you will approve. In the, especially like in the monthly classes. Thank you.
Question? Huh? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys. Other business, Mr. Ross?
Sometimes the wheels of government turn very slowly. Back in March, you approved a proposal that Mr. Gear made to refresh the network with a lot of new equipment to make it more effective, and then the E-rate Commission turned that proposal down, and we have simply, and we have waited until the end of the year to get any feedback from them, and so when they rejected it, Mr. Gear redesigned the change and eliminated some of the items that, that he originally had, had requested, so whereas the corporation was going to pay $58,000 in technology funds for this refresh of the network, it is now $41,304.84. So I, I think you approved this at one point already, but I would suggest that it, that it be reapproved at that, at that new figure to confirm that we are moving ahead with this network update.
We have a motion for the resubmission of a network refresh project.
Want to take a shout at it again, Steve?
It's yours last time.
I hope that we approve the refresh. Thank you.
We've done one latter. Okay, any discussion?
Just to clarify, we're actually getting the same proposal product as we originally submitted for this change.
Actually, it's, it's not quite the same. There's the same, he did, he did take out some equivalent, but, but it's, I think he feels like it's going to accomplish the, the same. And the E-rate Commission has already approved the second proposal, so we should be able to move quickly to a big delay.
Questions? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The appointment of Camden Jackson Township Public Library Board Member, Andy Kelly.
It is this board's responsibility to appoint that person, and this is a recommendation from the library, so unless somebody knows something that we don't know, I would recommend that we approve Mr. Kelly for, for this library.
Any motion? Next. A motion, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? See, update on athletic building. Mr. Friedland, would you update us, please?
You bet.
On what you know and?
Nothing. I'm trying to think back to when, it was early December, we got the H-frame set up, and then started working with RMC. They had to wait until last Friday because the church could only go out without power on Fridays, and the last two Fridays were holidays between Christmas and, and the New Year. So RMC got the transformer put in and the power hooked up, they started Sunday, and probably got half the lights in and a lot of the other boxes and everything ready to be wired. Got to do a redo, I don't like the way they installed, came into the building, so they're going to redo that. They just came straight up from the trench into the building, and I'd like to stay closer to the building to look nicer, plus it won't get hit by a lumbro, hopefully. So they're going to repair that. Currently, they're going to try to work the next few nights, now that we have power to the building, to get the rest of the wiring completed. And then moving forward, I just moved up all the HP systems that we'd already purchased, so I was waiting that at the bus barn. Moved those up there today, so they'll be ready to put those in. And then I guess the next thing we need to decide on is if we have the funds and want to move forward as far as making all enough locker rooms. I don't know where you guys are at on that, and you guys can just take time to think about it, it's not an emergency. We are working on the nets. We don't believe, we're working with the architect, we don't believe the weight of the frame down in the auxiliary gym, I don't think it'd be easy to mount on the trusses, and we don't think it'd be good for the trusses. So if we use that net, we'll just use the net itself and set up a cable system much like we have for the other net that's up in the mezzanine on the west end of the building, the gym. But other than that, any questions from you guys?
What's the time for?
Time for, if they get in there every night this week, they could have the rest of the building wired. On the HP system, I'll have to check with Shane on that. He's a, a limiting factor on that because he works two to three days a week down the west side of the fire department, so we're kind of dependent on his schedule.
What were the reasons for the rework of the electrical? Was it just a misunderstanding or as far as?
I think just a difference of opinion. You know, ideally, we talked with Chris, and Chris talked with Kirk, ideally, if we'd known where the box was going to be when it went through the pavement, the conduit when they laid the pavement, we didn't know where the box was going to go. And I think they were just trying to hurry a little bit, get it done, just not able to just look there. And so I've talked to them, they're going to change that to where, instead of going up from the, at the edge of the pavement and over to the building, it's going to escur on the pavement and come up the side of the building, so it's tied up against the building. And RMC was a little concerned about the levelness of the H-frame. We can level that up once the ground gets soft again. It was level, they dug the trench to put the conduit in, and it kind of settled a little quicker. So we can, we can straighten that out when the ground cools.
So based on this, as far as where, what we've approved and where we're going to end up, it looks like we're going to be about $8,900, oh, let me find my glasses, yeah, $8,900, maybe $3 over?
Over.
Is that right?
I think so.
No, I think you had allocated $90,000.
Right.
And your, your bottom line right now is $84.75. It would be the difference between the 90 and the 84.7.
No, 53. Okay, so it's 53.
Yeah, we don't intend to go over what you heard, that would not be cool.
Any question for Ross yet, Chris?
As far as the turf goes, where are we at on that? Do we, do we need approval on the purchase of that, or is it already in motion, or?
We'll need to, tonight, go ahead and do that, that's part of this, that's why it's the question for Ross, is the turf. We'll make a motion here in a second.
Yeah, that's, we're going to have a wait. We'll make sure it gets installed.
Yeah, we have to.
Why don't we go ahead, guys, and make a motion for the turf, and then we can just pull out and discuss the, the, all right. Somebody want to make a motion for the turf? It looks like it's? You want to make a motion for that, Chris?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the sports turf for the athletic building at $15,778.68.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for purchasing the turf for the athletic building. Now, discussion on that.
Is that an install price?
No.
We'll have to install.
We will.
Unless you want to find somebody to pay for that.
The base, I, today I got word the baseball team volunteered to install it. Today, I got word the baseball team volunteered to install it.
So the turf been cut down by anybody?
I don't know that it's glued or not.
My guess is, and I'd have to research it, my guess is it's just glued down. There could be some other kinds of anchors that they would recommend around the entrance, and I'll find that out so that they follow proper procedure.
It's a fairly heavy product.
Yeah, hopefully the manufacturer will have a recommendation.
They will. And once we get it approved, I'll look at the company's recommendations, follow through with that.
Yeah, I think what you'll find out is that we'll have to have something around the outside edge. So I can, you have seams that you have to put together, glue it down. And then the other thing is that the asphalt or concrete, doesn't matter, will need to be fifty, fifty-five degrees. Not air conditioner, but a temperature of a thing to make everything work. So that's why it's critical. I'm glad to hear that they're getting the heating in it. I don't, air conditioning isn't quite so critical right today, but...
I don't think it has been.
Yeah, it has the capability.
Well, okay, I do not know. You may have. I'm just trying to make sure things get done.
Right. So we will be basically putting ourselves, installing it ourselves at this point.
At this point, unless I read something that I can, I think prohibits the students from working with them, I'll come to you guys.
So other expenses we're going to have to have, we'll have to buy the glue, right? I mean, the label's free, that's glue.
Yeah.
And funds for the locker areas?
If you want to move forward with this.
And then some kind of gutter so the ice and snow doesn't slide off the roof and hit somebody, right? Some kind of gutter protection for safety purposes?
We can.
I think that'd be it. It needs at least one section on that walk-in door there on the north side.
Just for safety reasons?
Yeah.
And we, what we'll have, if we get this, we're only going to have five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars to work with. Is that going to be enough?
Well, we can take it step by step. We'll get the turf down first and then we'll move forward from there. If we don't have enough of the gutters, people will just have to...
I think that's the safety.
Yeah, if we don't look to go, if we need to put snow guard, it's just an L, like an L, right?
Shane and Neil last night stepped out and we looked at that last night. I mean, one section right there, and we can even put those heels on the roof too to help with the ice.
Right, because that's what the biggest problem is, is to slide off and hit somebody.
You don't need any on the east and west ends.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
I guess my biggest concern would be us installing it at a rather large price of something. What happens if we install it wrong and it doesn't ruin it?
Agreed. That's why once it's approved, I'm going to get online and figure out what it's going to take and if we're capable. If we're not, I'll come to you guys with a recommendation. Because you're right, I don't want to do it halfway.
Yeah, I'm afraid that doing it the first time could be the last time too. And so that would be my only concern is if we make the right decision on who puts it up.
Once it's approved, I'll find out from Mr. Ryan or Mr. Shins what the product is, where the company is, and I'll follow up on that.
This is brand new turf, right?
Right.
Like I knew we had talked about both.
Is there the possibility of new turf? Are they cheaper?
Yeah, but if it wasn't cheap enough to make it worthwhile, if there wasn't a big enough neighborhood rental to make it worthwhile.
I could say, is there a caller that, I think Steve, last time maybe you had a couple of snaples here. The last board meeting, was there actually two callers or was that just back, front and back side?
No, there was a black and a green.
Okay.
I think this is for the green, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's why I just want to make sure we've got that.
And it could, it very well could be that they're just going to lay this in there. I don't know if they're going to just leave down and on.
No, they may not even think about attaching it.
Yeah. But I mean, existing batteries, they're laying it flat. Once you had a huge wind, it didn't affect them. This could have raised the turf, hold it up in place. And then inside there, not going to worry about the wind. So it could very well be that they're not going to plant them, just lay it out, but I do not know.
Well, I'll find that out as well.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know and before we lock ourselves in, just make sure we know the whole mall, so as to make the last month pay.
Is there going to be kind of a pressure system, a fire launch system for that?
Not that I'm aware of. It's not required.
Any other question?
Ross, are you the project manager? Is anybody helping you or him at all, like yourself?
Well, I've had plenty of help from different people that are supporting me, yeah. I'm just kind of trying to represent school and like I say, when we saw that way they ran the power in there, we just didn't care for that. We're asking us what's that. I'm just trying to keep our eye on it. I've done a small amount of work here.
Okay, if not, we got a motion on the floor for the purchasing the turf for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Rong, the plumbing bid for the main gym area.
I would normally not bring you a bid I received the same day I received it. But if you look at the two bids that I shared with you for this repair, is it three leaks right now, Ross?
Uh, no, since we last met, it's, we're up to six or eight.
And these are not in joints, but they're in the main...
They're just in the pipe.
They're in the pipe itself, so it's a little bit of a, frankly, it's a little bit of a disaster waiting to happen. And our original bid was that we received and was for seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty. That did not include any of the repair of the plaster or replacement of plaster. This last bid from Benchmark was for forty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty. It includes valves, it includes replacing with plaster as opposed to drywall. It includes access panels in locker rooms. The one thing that we would have to do would be paint, and I believe that we can certainly handle that. So I would recommend strongly tonight that we go ahead and accept this bid from Benchmark and see if we can get them scheduled to begin to do this work in a timely and convenient way. Because, like you say, it is a real problem and we need to have it addressed with that gym floor in jeopardy that it's in, with this situation.
Mr. Rong, so if I understand right, it's Benchmark and not the other one?
Ben Shovers is the other bid.
So we're actually...
You had two bids. You've got two bids.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure.
As further than I move, we accept the plumbing bid for the main gym area, replacing leaky water lines and valve that's presented. The Benchmark mechanical total repairs, including plumbing and sealing repairs, forty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, got a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Where do you, is it one line or...
No, there's three or four lines up in there.
And where does this run to and from?
Where are the girls' locker room, over to the boys' locker room?
Can y'all try to get that done this year if they're on their books for this summer?
Hopefully they can get all the, next week.
Okay. Those lines running up into the ceiling?
They're in the bulkhead on the north side of the chimney and gym, the lower square section that runs across.
Okay, so it goes down to the north end and then goes across?
Well, no, it goes from, all the way across the north end of the gym.
Right.
For the girls' locker room to the boys' locker room.
There's three different water lines that...
Have they, are they replacing it with plastic or...
Copper.
Copper?
It's steel right now.
Yeah, steel. They're replacing the copper and galvanizing. Yeah, thirty-five-year-old galvanizer. They're going to replace it with copper and insulation.
Is this out of operation or is it out of...
I would probably recommend that we go ahead and use the bond money. And then we will still have operational funds to work with as you go through until you're able to do your new bond. Because that money does need to be used by you.
Would you like to amend and just add where we're going to bring that from?
I would, just for the motion to add that that money will come out of our existing bond.
Now, I just want to make an additional comment. Obviously, as we give bids, we've got two high-quality companies that would look. But I would like for the board to consider for us to go forward with a company like Tekton that's done some workforce to class. So we have construction management available. It takes it off of, especially Ross, who is a superintendent to babysit all these projects and puts a live will on those contractors. Food for Bob, I know they're doing a lot of projects around the schools. I don't know if they would be able to pick up immediately on anything, but for going forward, I think that's in our best interest to have somebody else present those days. Mr. Food for Bob, that's all.
If I may make a comment, I agree on ours. Like when we are able to get another bond, again, this is the Tiberia Iceberg one concerns me. If you remember when they replaced all the water lines downtown Delphi, once they got those all new and increased the pressure, the ones with the next two or three blocks out started breaking. I worry about the same thing here. Those pipes are just, they're wore out.
And before you vote on this, I think we need to really give a big shout out of credit to Greg Martin. Greg has worked really hard on this. And he is the one who's worked with the plumbers to get the bids and so he's done a great job.
The Troy Howzers are being able to fit up in the cupboard while we get there.
I'm assuming Greg's happy with the work that Benchmark has proposed and everything.
Yes, he had a long conversation with him today. Because I said, Greg, are we talking about the same thing here? Are we talking about doing the same work? And he got back with him and confirmed that we were.
Have a motion. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Future dates, February eighth, twenty twenty-one is our regular board meeting. Looking down the line, March ninth, twenty twenty-one, actually six-thirty. This, I believe, Opera House, the circle's still on, right? Okay, thumbs up, that's good enough. March sixteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-two is the high school band to New Orleans, and we're going to be positive about that.
Yep.
Mr. Spreback?
I don't have the dates for your meetings for super captain. Are those, any of those coming up? Aren't they coming up anywhere?
I believe so.
That'll be, I guess we'll find later.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll get those, Farland and Sheen sent out. Okay. More comment? Oh, go ahead.
Just something for us, I think, to consider for future agenda item. I'd like for us to start figuring out what we're going to be doing with our permanent athletic director position. Are we maintaining for the next school year or are we going to hire stuff more permanent?
Anything else? I think something else, we need to do something too. We just discussed our piping, stuff like that, so we can put a, we may not be refunded today, but at least get a plan in place. I know we can pull back some of our stuff that before when we closed with another company. I look back at like three to four million dollars just to do few things there, and that was a complete cop. So I think that's something that it may not be, we need to start that and then when we have a superintendent and the one for one way. So I think there's a planning and work session sometime. That's not so pretty, cause we need to do it. Okay, anything else?
Baker, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Baker Tilly, I have had discussions with them about bonding. And they're prepared to come and present information to you about what that schedule might look like. And based on the number of years for the bond, it's an amazing range of money that you can find.
We'd like to see that at our next meeting.
If possible?
So I'm ready to see what you can do on that, Mr. Rong. Okay. Anything else? Board comments. I guess we'll start with the rookie.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for the warm welcomes. I'm excited to be on board and see what kind of input I can help out with, with the school corporation. Also with the search for a new superintendent. I will say, I was very happy with the presentation. I know you keep saying there's a lot of other people involved, Mr. Rong, but you are kind of the push behind that. And it has shown since you've been here. So I do appreciate that. Appreciate everybody's help as far as cutting back to allow this to happen. It is exciting to hear the administrators' comments on all the exciting things that these students are still allowed to do, even though with COVID, a lot of other schools are out. I'm glad to see that we're in still, and hopefully we can continue to stay healthy. And some of these future fundraisers and trips will be able to go through and allow these students to still have fun.
Ms. Gibson, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. I wanted to first say welcome to our new board member. And then on top of that, a congratulations to Haley Nelson and Evan Fritz for their sports awards. And I'm also wanting to say that I'm glad we have made it past our first week going into our second. And I hope we can stay for a few more. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Yes. I also wanted to say congrats to Declan, our new school board member. And then I also wanted to say that I'm glad that the elementary school has been able to be decorated by individuals in the school I think has still in some of...
Thank you. Mr. Nettle?
Okay. It's good to hear from our student representatives. I'm glad that they can still show some excitement and enthusiasm in these times. When you look at the things that the schools are doing and you think of the things that they're missing out on, it's just, it's really sad that they have to miss this part of it in these times. And I want to thank all the staff and the custodians and everyone here in the corporation for all their hard work and making sure that our schools are able to be in session right now. And Allison and Mr. Rong and Andrea for all the hard work that you guys have put in on getting our budgets back in order and getting our grants brought up to date. And it looks like we're really in pretty good financial shape right now. You guys really need a huge thank you and a big pat on the back for that. And of course, I'd like to congratulate our kids on their athletic achievements. It's not only the Fritz boy and Nelson, but I see out on the board that we've had a lot of kids that are all conference and tennis and, you know, everything else is going on too. So for this year, it's really great that our kids are hanging in there. We give a big award for that. Thank you.
Mike?
I'd like to wish Mrs. Rickle good luck with the junior ice depth and sophomore PSAT testing coming up. I know it's stressful for teachers and kids. I enjoyed Mr. Shider's artwork and putting his packet for us. Congratulations to Mrs. Clayton on her... Congratulations to Mrs. Clayton on her improvement in compliance for her IEDs. I know that was a lot of work. This is a deal for a full house in a building. Uh, really happy for the cafeteria, all the cafeteria personnel to get a dollar an hour raise. It's well deserved. They follow with above and beyond and I know they certainly are. And welcome back.
Mr. Myers. Zach, I will say welcome to the board. It'll be determined if it's a congratulations or not. Some people would, uh, say it probably isn't, but. Thank you to Mr. Ronk and Andrea for, uh, all the financial reports and the information you give us. It's greatly appreciated and all the hard work you put in. Wish everyone a happy new year and, uh, let's hope we stay in school through, uh, we'll say through spring break at least. Amen to that.
Mr. Gill.
Uh, Mr. Streetback, I understand that the, uh, there's a fight over who gets to drive the new school bus, but it's, it typically is you.
Yeah, yeah. Every chance I get, I have it set not away from you guys.
Is that right? Is it, is it going well even in this cold weather?
Yes, yeah, we're learning.